I'm going to call the meeting to order at 8:08 and apologize to those of you who've been waiting. Sort of out of our control, but I'm sorry. And welcome, Tim. Welcome. Revisions to the agenda? I was just going to add to approve the creation of the... Creation and membership of the Act 49 Committee. To that, to the action agenda. Is that okay to do that?
You can, Robert's rules, you can add whatever you want.
Okay. Public comments? A motion to approve the minutes of November 28?
So moved.
Kari and a second?
Second.
Carl, comments, questions, changes? Lucy, you did a really nice job. Everybody all set? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? That motion carries. Let's go down to the reports to the board and go right to the students. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, so we met last week, right?
We did.
Well, not much fun to talk about. The first thing that we want to talk about is we had winter concert yesterday for... Was it just high school?
Um, no, high school, middle school. They're doing a new thing this year, so band. Yeah, and BLM went to Berlin Elementary today. And we talked with the faculty, with all the teachers. We had Shelley Vermilia came, and so we broke in half, and half of the staff went and talked with Ginger, Devonte, Izzy, and I were... All four of us were there, and they... Half of the staff went and talked to us, and half the staff was with Shelley Vermilia, and then we switched.
Who's Shelley? Sorry.
She's Zora and Dashiel's mom, and she teaches at... She's a professor at St. Mike's, like Rachel and Ginger's.
Okay.
And other places.
And many other places.
And she's in teacher education.
And then the next thing is, I correct me if I'm wrong here, but I had a conversation with Brian Fisher last week. And he mentioned, is there a potential food service budget cut? Is that on the... Could that happen?
Yeah.
Okay. So, sort of just from the student perspective, I wanted to share about the food here at U32. So basically, since Brian came, whenever that was, like two or three years ago, I've noticed that just the quality and variety in school lunches has really improved. I know from speaking with him that not necessarily more students are getting school lunch, but those who do get lunch are just having a better experience. And I just really like to speak to the fact that Brian's brought a lot to the program, and that I don't... I'm no, like, financial expert, but at least from my perspective, I don't think that is the place that money should be cut from.
I'll beat you to it, but go ahead.
Do you mind if I interrupt just for a moment?
Oh, go for it.
I won't break your train of thought. How do you think more students can be induced to get lunch?
Yeah, so I actually talked to Brian about that last week, because he came up and talked to me after the meeting. So, from my understanding, part of the problem is that students will just get, like, a slice of pizza, or like, one of the, like, grab and go wraps or whatever. But what they have to do for the food service to get money back from the government is getting what's called a meal deal. So they have to get, like, all the components of, like, a healthy meal. And I think the problem is that students just don't do that. And I think if they remain more aware of, like, the impact that that has on our school, they would. Like, I've talked to a couple of kids and been like, hey, like, did you know if you get these extra things, like, it actually gives our school money, from my understanding? And I think that Brian's worked to have students be more involved in the process of school lunch. Like, he's had a callback either this year or last year with vegetarians and vegans about making more options. So I think that in order to get more kids to get school lunch, we just need to, like, make them more aware of the variety. Because I think a lot of kids, there are so many things we can get, and they're just simply not aware of it. And I think that's why we haven't seen more kids getting lunch.
Thanks.
That was my question.
It's great to get some feedback from actual students. All we know is that once a month we get a meal, that's actually pretty good.
And, you know, when we talked about the two sides of the budget, the money that comes in and the money that goes out. And if we don't want to cut the money that's going out to pay those people, because that's what helps make the quality, and he made that very clear, then we got to figure out how to get more money coming in. And if you look at the percentage of kids that have taken lunches over the last, I forget what it is, four or five years, it's dropped precipitously. And so, we also have fewer students, and a smaller percentage of them are taking lunch. So there's a lot less money coming in. So, in my mind, getting more kids to eat the lunch would be great.
Yeah, and also for the budget, I know a lot of students, not just BLM, but other students who are also wondering about the second flag pole or the new flag pole, and whether that was going to be incorporated into the budget too.
That's not something that you don't have to... Yeah, it's not, it doesn't come and go. It's a small enough amount of money that if they want to do it, they can find the money.
Um, yeah, so every winter slash fall, I guess now, the middle schoolers, is it eighth graders? Seventh graders do Lotus Lake Adventure Days, so we're also having those this week. And I remember them from middle school, and they're just super fun. You like, do all these games outside, and you bond with your TA's. So that's happening later this week on, looks like, Thursday and Friday, or tomorrow, Thursday?
And the middle school here is starting their annual production.
When did they go from three separate plays to one big play? They used to do each corps did a play.
This is stage sixteen.
This is stage sixteen.
Oh, it's not...
The corps still does a play, so it's like...
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
The corps, like, you have to do the play, and then...
That's what I thought she was talking about. Okay. Yep, thanks.
So that's kind of all we have to report again until the week since we last met.
Do you want to talk about the second flag pole? Do you... Is there anything that...
I see weather's our bigger problem right now, in getting one put out there. But we've got the funds set aside in our capital budget. We just have to get the process.
And so the idea is we will do it.
So you are getting second flag pole?
That's, that's our goal.
Will it be, like, the only one out there, or will it be an addition to that?
No, it'll be two flag poles.
It'll be the second flag pole.
Yeah, so is it, like, is the Black Lives Matter flag going on that one? I just wasn't aware of getting a second flag pole.
So we're working towards getting a second flag pole, one flag pole. Actually, we would probably be erecting a taller flag pole that would carry the American flag and the Vermont flag, and use our existing flag pole for student organizations as outlined in the...
In my...
Flag policy.
And the thought behind that is that when the flags go to half mast, if there are two flags on the existing flag pole, they get pretty low. Is that correct?
Yeah, the Black Lives Matter flag is... Any third flag on that flag pole is almost on the ground at half mast.
Thank you very much. And you're welcome to stay or go at any time you need to go. Somebody's mother's back there.
Before the meet, I would love to hear the story of Lucy's butt. If she doesn't mind sharing it.
Oh, my butt? Oh, it might... I got X-rays yesterday. It's some sort of, like, stress-type reaction. So we're still figuring that out, but for the meet, I've had a blast in his boots, so...
On the snow? Tim?
It sounds like you have solved the flag pole stuff. But have you come up with a plan for what is going to go on to the flag pole? And the standards and guidelines?
So, a month ago maybe, or I can't... Recently, we passed a flag policy that outlines that we will accept student requests for flags, and they have to support the student learning outcomes and the mission and the vision of the school. And there's a procedure that the administration has to follow to bring that flag request to the board. And...
Correct, but it's not... It hasn't... It's not an adopted policy that's written down for anybody, for like, these girls or myself or you to read yet.
Yeah, it is. We passed it. It is a...
My policy is all the procedures have not been finalized, but we're... But they're pretty... I mean...
Do you have it in there? Because I have it.
That's what I'm going.
Okay, I have it in my bag, if you don't have it.
The policy's been adopted, and we were charged for, right, as you were just saying, to put together the written policy.
The written procedures.
Procedures. So here's the policy right here. That we have, and it says, "The criteria the board will include in making decisions on flying flags, request the flag must come from student groups, which must be able to articulate the importance of flying the flag. The flag must represent ideas that are linked to and support the current WC... U32 mission goals and student learning outcomes. The flag must bring no harm to other groups of students at U32. The request to fly the flag, other than the United States, a Vermont flag, must be made annually to the school board, and the school board may dictate the length of time the flag is to be flown. If appropriate, the board will invite and comment from the community, including students, about the proposal. School administration, in consultation with the U32 board and school community, will develop operating procedures that include criteria for reviewing requests from student groups to raise the flags." I know Jody and Stephen, but the reason I'm saying Jody is because I remember seeing it from you a little bit. We had some draft procedures that just hadn't been finalized yet.
But I thought that the point of all this is that these students were going to make their own groups up and then have their own flags on the pole, not bringing outside sources, flags, organizations, and things like that.
It was that student groups could make the request for a flag. And it didn't specify which flag, whether it's theirs or that they created or existing flags. But that they have to...
I wish Diane was here and saw there, and I feel very right, but she read, and it cannot be another business, organization, nonprofit, anything like that. And that's why BLM is acceptable, if they come up with their own logo and all that. But the other flag is not.
So we didn't address what the flag would look like?
Exactly.
That actually where the loophole is. Well, that never came up in our discussion at all.
What did come to you?
And that's why I said three, four weeks ago that let's not go there. Let's get a flag pole, and then we can move on to this issue later. And I believe it's been thrown under the carpet.
I'm sorry, I never... I didn't understand that. I never understood that there was a...
It's been quietly...
That you were concerned about... I don't know, I don't know what you call them. You know, student-designed flags and...
Those references on the...
I'm pretty sure I can speak for her, she's not here, but she's got everything highlighted and everything. It cannot be a nonprofit organization. It has to be a school-functioning thing that's brought up by girls and guys here.
But it... Our policy doesn't address, and I never, I never even thought about that, whether the flag is...
It is, and I believe Diane showed me where you guys made it an adopted policy and wrote it down.
Well, this is what we... What was the date we adopted it?
Uh, you adopted it on November 7.
So, and we had read it, we... I had written it one time, it came back. We made a few changes, it came back again, and I think the second time we adopted it, or one more time?
Second time, second time you did it to...
Yeah. And I could, I could go back in my bag back there and find the...
I think there may be some confusion around who creates the flag versus who could bring forth the idea of the flag.
Well, and that's...
And I think that maybe we're...
So do you agree that a nonprofit organization that is able to do that?
No.
And promote it? No, 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 I didn't mean to that. I haven't had that discussion.
But in our... Go ahead, Carl.
Only a student group can make the... I... Wait, let me finish. Only a student group can come to us to make the request to put up a flag. We did not write into the policy, in any way, shape, or form, directions as to what that flag would be. That would be something that the process, the procedure would then address when a group brought a request for a flag to us. So we did not strictly rule out an external org... A flag from an external source. But we also didn't necessarily say that it would go up either. It would have to meet the criteria that we laid out in the policy.
I'm just looking back in the drafts of the policy.
Yeah, so was the month before...
I'm looking at, I just went and read the 24th of October.
And there was something down, kind of three-quarters of the way down, about... It had to be legitimate student groups. We took out the word legitimate. But then at the bottom, it said something about... Go down to the bottom paragraph.
"School administration, in consultation with the U32 board and the school community, will develop operating procedures that include criteria reviewing requests from individuals and/or groups to raise flags," so...
And that's where we took out individuals?
Yeah, so hold on.
And we said student groups?
I'm going to the meeting before. So, uh, so here's a draft that's much different. And just, at least in length, I have to read to say, content.
And I'm, I'm sorry if there was a misunderstanding.
I remember a conversation about the groups too, of whether outside groups could make the request of the board.
And we decided no. And we changed that. Yep.
So, you said, just a second, you decided no.
It has to be a student group that makes a request.
That's what my whole point is, and the Black Lives Matter flag is not a student group.
No, but the student group made the request to fly the Black Lives Matter flag. That's what our policy, that's what we passed, that a student group can make a request to fly a flag, and we can accept it. We couldn't have the, um, I don't know... You know, the National Guard come in and say, "We want to fly our flag on your flag pole," because it's not a student group. But if someone came here and gave us reason, and I'm totally making this up, you know, if some student group came in and said, "The National Guard flag represents this and this and this to us." I don't even know if they have a flag. And the board said, "It goes along with the student learning outcomes and the mission and the vision, and it doesn't cause harm," and all, there are a couple other... They could raise, the student group could raise that flag.
If it doesn't cause harm, this is... That's a hard one.
It is a hard one, and so that would be, that would be for the board to decide. And the procedures ask for consultation with student groups and with administration to figure out whether it causes, and with the students to figure out whether it causes harm or not.
I thought to stay away from all the drama and stuff that you were going to help support the kids and all the, their groups that they're building and creating inside the school, not outside the school.
This doesn't preclude that. That could still certainly happen.
We also talked about...
It would be easier.
Creating a U32 flag potentially.
We did talk about that also.
Which has been, like, all the best things.
So, and when we develop policy, we try to kind of think of a broad umbrella that gets across the meaning that we want. And then the procedure kind of sets up the criteria, the specific way that that's going to happen. And hopefully, between that broad umbrella of what we're trying to create in the school and the specific way that it does, will meet the needs of all the groups. And if a group comes and it doesn't fit the procedure, or they think it does, and they bring it to us, and we don't, then we have the right to make that decision one way or the other.
Sorry, one question, I know it's late, we need to move on. But today, the stock market went right through the roof, okay? So it's horrible. But let's just say that this school is about economics and things like that, okay? What if all of a sudden, the world just wanted to really promote China? And all of a sudden, we want to throw a China flag up there?
So a student group would have to come to us, to the board. First, they'd have to go through the procedures with the administration, and then they'd have to go, come to the board and be able to say that it supports the mission of U32, the vision of U32, the student learning outcomes of U32. It doesn't cause harm to others. There are two others, but I can't remember what they are.
I request the flag.
Okay, so those are sort of the big criteria.
And I would say, just on, in that regards, that the flag of another nation has different rules to follow anyway. So, we might, there are other things that would be considered by administration in those kinds of cases.
So, it's our, it's the school board's job to figure out, when those requests come one by one, whether they fit with this policy or not. And it's up to the student group, before they come to us, to make sure they've fulfilled all of those criteria also. Thanks. And I'm sorry if there was a misunderstanding. Sorry. Budget, draft two? You guys want to talk to this?
Yeah, we're... Sorry.
Sorry.
I'm just going to hand it right over to you.
Thanks, girls.
So we're at the budget. Yeah, we're at the budget. So, you gave us a time...
I would probably do better if I were asked questions right now.
Well, what are the differences?
Oh, well, the differences are that, once we have now made some changes to our estimates for assessments from WCSU, also from the CBCC, from the tech center, along with the increases that we estimate through salary, health insurance, that we have a need to reduce our budget by a fair amount. I mean, we've really, this, this draft is so different than the last draft that it's hard to compare them directly. There were some features that we had talked about already. We talked about food service. So if we were to include food service as part of our budget, we would have to add an additional 500,000...
You mean the whole food service?
If we did a whole food service, we would have to add an additional 500, a little over $500,000 to the entire budget, which would put us over the threshold, which Bill can explain much better than I can. And so we, we did not include that as, as an option in this budget draft. We also looked at food service overall. We did not see where we could add an additional $70,000 of support without cutting faculty position, because there are other cuts that are already within this budget to meet the board's request of the 2.99, or less than 30 budget. And so, we actually pushed forward in this budget as a recommendation to, to eliminate one position within food service. We have a retirement happening this year, so there would be... There would just be unfilled, yeah, attrition.
And does that do close to 70,000?
It does... No, no. No, but there are other things that we can take, that we can move towards in terms of, of trying to reduce that. I think one of the other concerns that, and Jonathan, you brought this up, is making sure that we support students. So we do, I don't know if the board recalls, but at times, we've asked the board to eliminate debt that existed because of students who were not able to pay. We do that pretty regularly, and we make sure that kids are taken care of. We run a very small deficit now. There was a time where we were running about a $10,000 deficit with what students had purchased, students and staff, I should be clear, had purchased but were running in the red. And so that's down into the $2,000 to $3,000 range now. And usually, what we see is a student who is, who ends up on that list because they're not, they don't have the funds. We typically, Brian is doing an excellent job. And let me just say, this is an excellent job of contacting the family, getting the student approved for free and reduced lunch if necessary. And that's typically the scenario, is that that student's run up a debt because they actually qualify. And then we typically write off the debt that was there. And that can be anywhere from, you know, $20 to $200 is what we've looked at on individual students. But I will say that Brian is very aware of making sure that if somebody needs a lunch, they get a lunch, or needs breakfast, gets breakfast. And he's worked with families to make sure the kids get qualified.
I would also say that for those who are qualified, it's a code system. So even though I work here, I have money on my account, I go and punch in my code. You know, and it's, and so the kids have their code system. And you can pay with cash at the cash register as well, but there's a code system. And so that helps take away some of that stigma of, you know, who's getting a free lunch.
I've run the register before. I can't begin to tell you who's free and reduced and who's not.
There's no...
I can't tell, running the register, who gets a free lunch and who's paying for their lunch. Because they typically, the kid will have a few dollars on their account. I mean, it's, it's, it is, it's near impossible for you just in glance to tell. You really have to know what's going on.
So can we pause on this point of the food service for just a moment? So what you're telling us is you've reduced the food service expense by a position?
Right.
And essentially, we're, we'd be funding it at approximately the same level of the current year?
Yes, so our budget shows the same level of funding for food service, which is about $31,000.
Okay, okay, so that's not what we asked for last time, like, so we just pause and ask how people feel about, about that?
And the reason you did that is because otherwise you couldn't hit this 2.3%, 3%?
I could not hit that 3% or less mark without starting to eliminate teaching positions in that form.
And we talked about that on Thursday, and I was in full support. I said I would, could not support fully funding at $100,000 as your superintendent would go having to make academic cuts.
Although there is a line that says, "Academic program minus 269." Is that the special education? Does that correspond on the next page to the special education?
Yes. Yeah, you saw that big difference in the special education, yes.
So was that...
So just in terms of process, I think you guys made a decision in a draft form that we may have arrived at on our own. What we, I think what we were asking for was, put it in there, show us what it looks like, and then, and then offer us a, sort of a menu of painful options that we can choose from. And we went ahead and ordered for us.
So I'll tell you, I took the responsibility, I heard that loud and clear, Kari. I decided not to follow that. And I, and I said that to Stephen, and he said, you know, when we were discussing this, I said, listen, we are, we are going to make, you know, we need, we are going to have to go into some academic areas. And we need a budget that we recommend.
There are also other factors that I would say, as we go through this budget, you're going to see that we did not know, actually, we didn't even know at the time.
Right.
And so, when you asked us to go put together scenarios, we also didn't have full information as to some of the other places that were going to impact our budget.
We didn't know until Thursday morning that we had a $117,000 increase coming from CBCC. So we, so we had to, we had to put that into the mix to get down to 3%.
And that's in here?
Yes.
So there's a...
So where did you see that?
What was that for?
A 12% increase in their tuition.
Oh, okay.
So we, we didn't, we knew, we did know here Wednesday night, didn't have the dollar amounts, but we knew, because you had sat through it, Kari, that we were changing the population shift that's happening for the Washington Central Assessments.
So that came down to a positive for us?
Uh, no, 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 it was another...
Oh, I thought you said all these things were positive. They're all negative?
No, these are all negative.
Salary and benefit, tech center, and Washington Assessment, that's negative?
Those are all things that came back to us and hit us Thursday morning.
Okay, so what did you take out of the budget in order to lower the percent increase with all of these things going higher? I just totally misunderstood that.
Okay, so, so where we, so we, we... The biggest, the biggest spot that we reduced our budget in this was personnel that were not teachers. And so we looked at, across the school, what positions did we have that were not directly impacting individual students or were a certified teacher position? And so, the, what you see before you is, you know, one of those spots is in food service. We also have, within our paraprofessionals, which support classrooms, not individual students, we reduced in that area as well, as well as saying that we would not fill a position that was coming from Berlin. So we have a student coming with... So we have a student coming with a one-to-one need from Berlin. But as opposed to adding another position into our budget, we would absorb that into our existing staff. And so, so with, with that cut, so you see, I mean, the, the one line that you see the most is special ed programs is the one that, that took the cut. That also reduces some of our revenue, but more importantly, it reduces, it reduces our overall budget enough to get us close to the, we didn't actually, as you see, we got to three point oh three. So we didn't actually get below three percent.
I, I'd just like to probe again a thought that I have to thank Kari for carrying on my behalf at a finance committee meeting before. And looking back a couple of, one or two SU board meetings ago, there was, there were projections for end of year fund balances for all the various schools and the SU. And added together-
One point, two point one, one point's about one point nine mil right now.
It's about one point nine mil right now, okay. So-
Rough numbers from you, doing it from my head.
Okay, yeah, that's absolutely fine. The, and I know we're in a, we're in a hedging situation, we're not sure what, necessarily what's gonna happen. But if there is a merger, then those fund balances are gonna be merged as well. So the, the target fund balance for the merged district will be four percent of the-
Yeah.
So that would be like one point two?
No, we're, we're right around the four percent. The target's probably gonna be less because we probably don't need all that fund balance. The problem is right now that our, well, many of your fellow boards are talking about spending down their fund balances and not coming in with them. And so that's gonna be a tough thing to do. So we're trying to, I'm trying to figure out, it's kind of, I just don't, I can't tell you to depend on fund balance.
Right, understood.
Because I just don't know, I mean, already DODI last month decided to spend sixty thousand of their fund balance because feeling like they need to spend it for their voters because it was raised with a DODI budget. I have a different viewpoint than the board does because all this money is state money. It's not local town money, it's a state funding system. And so there isn't a town in our, our district that raises enough taxes in their town to pay their education expenses. So it's all coming from different places. That could be a nice, Alan and I had a nice long debate on that.
Just to speak to that, the, I, we've talked about making this an orderly transition from a budgeting process that we try to do this as similarly as we have in the past. And to try to anticipate what the next board wants to do with its fund balances, I, I think we should behave as though we're creating our own unique budget, and then they'll do what they want.
Uh, understood, and, and I think that's, that's an excellent point. And I'm sort of just kind of testing, because at the same time, I think you mentioned that this next fiscal year is the last fiscal year for one of the bonds.
Yeah.
So-
Four hundred and thirty.
Four, four hundred and thirty. So anyway, I'm, what I'm just trying to feel out is whether, you know, granted that we want to preserve as much as we can to, for the, for the track and for other needs. But if, if we could, you know, peel out a hundred fifty thousand to take, to knock off one percentage on the-
So you can do that, but you'll have a double bill of that, so two hundred and fifty is at three hundred thousand dollars you'll have to increase in two thousand, in two thousand twenty-one fiscal year. And as I said to you last meeting, you are one bond payment away from, when the bond ceases to be, bond payments right now do not count for your local spending to set your tax rate. Next year, when that bond payment goes away, and we've talked about using that for other capital expenses, you will be at the threshold at a level, not service, level funded budget. So that's not including the raises from healthcare or from salary increases. So there will be definite cuts in two thousand twenty-one. So you can go ahead and do that, but we're just, it's the same, you're causing a worse problem for two thousand twenty-one because now instead of being right at the threshold, you'll be three hundred thousand dollars over the threshold. I'm looking three or four years down the road budget.
That's good.
And the, this whole district is gonna be in threshold. We have three schools right now that are in, over the threshold spending limits with draft ones budgets. And we're looking at all of our districts in a year or two, just at the rates we've been spending. So it doesn't matter governance, we could be talking, doesn't matter governance, I wanna really say that clearly. And I hope you're getting this on the video. It does not matter governance. You can go combine, merge together or individually. We have a budget problem in the amount we're spending. So, and the state has, and it's gonna get, it's gonna get tighter faster because of the way the law was changed in two thousand fifteen to set the threshold limits. And it's based off the two thousand fifteen school year budget plus CPI. And CPI has been really low. This year, right now, it's at two nine, which is the highest it's been in three or four years. And we've had increases much greater than CPI.
Of course we have, because we're not a consumer. We're, we're a government agency.
Right, right, and that's right, because we have set pieces that we have to pay. I mean, that, that is part of the, you're right, Scott. It's part of the place.
And, and I would, I would add in with your permission is that special education funding changes after this year as well. And we're not sure exactly how that's going to affect us, uh, in its entirety. So special education funding is based upon a reimbursement formula now, so you see the reimbursements come in. After this budget cycle, it becomes a, a grant, a block grant. And so that block grant amount is all we will receive. There is no excess, there is no, you know, so we're, we need to begin to position ourselves to accept that reality as well, which is we will have lower revenue for our special education spending. So, so-
As we get more kids.
So you see we're doubling knives and chainsaws and all that fun stuff, and we're throwing more in because the, the changes that are occurring, while they're not all going to happen this year, we, we need as a school to start planning for those changes that are gonna happen both in the, in the next budget cycle after this one, but also as we start to look at our overall numbers, which we've been, we've been really poring over. Our kindergarten class is a pro, is seventy-six students right now, in all of the kindergartens in our supervisory union. Seventy-six total students. As opposed to what we have been working from, what you think about, our seventh grade class is a hundred and eleven kids. So our classes are running, we, we average about a hundred and nine kids per grade level at U thirty-two. The elementary schools average ninety-eight students per grade level. And, and that actually declines the further out you get.
Yeah.
And so we have to start planning our school for every year being a reduction in the number of people who work here over the next decade. And so, Scott, I appreciate the idea of using the fund balance, but if we have to make up three hundred thousand dollars when our enrollment drops again, we, we, we just, we're gonna, we're gonna spiral down quickly in, in that case.
And Scott, we, years ago, we had a discussion and decided we were not going to do that because it just, it didn't reflect our true spending. It kind of, it just inflated. It didn't, it wasn't fair, and the next year, you're paying for it twice. It's what Phil Scott did with the whole education budget, you know? Kicked it down the road and said, here, we'll fund it with this.
So, I mean, if you look at, if you look at the kindergartens, the past three years and four, the past five years are all under a hundred. I mean, we've, this is our demographic projections that we get every year have been showing us that we're gonna go down in size. And we're headed for, we're for, our equalized pupils right now across the district are at fourteen, did, did, where to put, right, fourteen thirty-nine. When I came, our equalized pupils were close to seventeen hundred. And if this trend continues, we're headed for eleven to twelve hundred kids.
The trend is definitely continuing.
Yeah.
And in fact, you know, this is maybe a bigger thing, but that's the, that's the real crisis.
Population loss in the month, it's overall.
Yeah.
Not just schools, I believe.
Yeah, exactly.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes.
So I guess in light of that, are we doing enough with this budget to reduce? Are we, are we wasting a year that we could better position ourselves for this coming?
I do not believe so, because we can also see, so this is that long-term planning. What we see are some retirements that are on the horizon for us. We will certainly have some attrition, you know, there will be a few teachers that leave. We have to ask ourselves at this point in time, should a teacher leave, do we really fulfill that position? Like, where, how do we prioritize that? I will say that when we looked at our cuts, the one place that we tried to preserve within our budget, the increase that, that existed there was in math. So we do have a teacher on a one-year contract, but we have, we have tried to preserve in our budget to keep that teacher, primarily based around the conversation we just had, which is we, we have a goal of reducing math. I would say that everywhere we looked, we looked at is, can we preserve a certified teacher instead of a classroom support that is not certified? And that was what we looked at. So the DMG report, if we go back to that, we are trying to implement some aspects of that within this budget, is really what, uh, it, this budget is trying to address.
And if we look at our class sizes and our staffing sizes, are they still reasonable?
So we average about thirteen to fourteen kids per class across the entire school. The only classes that are under ten students, when we look, this is the report as of today, when we look at the, the number of kids in class, the number of classes or the classes where we have less than ten kids, their support classes, so math support or reading support, and they usually are in the six to nine student range, or our AP classes in AP Stat, AP Calculus, Chemistry II, and AP Physics and Bio. This is actually, I would consider more of an anomaly of this year than the long-term trends in the AP classes. We just have a smaller enrollment AP this year in those classes than we, we've had traditionally. But they're all under ten, if, just so we're clear on which classes.
Are those classes likely to be above ten next year?
Yes.
Okay.
So U thirty-two is not one of those schools that's at the threshold? Is that correct?
It isn't right now, but when the bond payment goes away, you'll be right at it. Because the difference of what's above the threshold right now, and the bond payment is less than a hundred thousand dollars, and just the medical increases this year are around a hundred thousand, so this is perverse.
Okay. So we're not anticipating any new information that would put us over the threshold the next?
Uh, well, I will tell you, as I said in there, I don't know that our equalized pupils, it's done in-house. Michelle and Lori are really good, but we're having a hard time getting information from AOE. They have not met a timeline with many different things with budget that they usually do this time of year. They're just overwhelmed with work. They don't have a staff down there that they used to have. They've been cut.
So last question is that, so this draft of the budget, does it significantly impact student learning in a negative way on a budget basis?
I would have to say no, based upon the, the goals of the board. I do not believe that it does.
You're speaking to preserving teachers.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was the thing. I mean, when we were talking and doing this work last week, it was, let's go right to the DMG report. We're gonna try to do it a little more gradually. But to say, you know, we're putting in, we're keeping teachers.
And then I guess my question is, you're keeping teachers, but are those teachers able to meet the needs of the kids without that classroom support? And I know the DMG report says that classroom teachers do it better. But I know from experience, if you have some support in there, they can do, if you're differentiating, you've got someone who can do a group, maybe it's the highest kids or the kids that are most, you know, have, I don't know, and the teacher works with another group of kids.
I would offer that the classroom support is usually, you, usually will see someone else in that classroom who's there for one-on-one support in many of those same classes. And so what we have to do is we have to help our one-to-one people work with other students as well, so that they're not just focused on that one kid for the entire time if possible. But I will say this, that it does require teachers to, to differentiate, you know, be stronger at differentiation within their, their education. I would say that for the last two years that we've been working on our teachers with project-based learning, which is something that helps do that, like, we've, we've been doing the things to try to improve and help them improve their own instruction.
And if you have one-on-one assistance, are those U thirty-two people, or are they Washington County Mental Health people?
Both. Well, I don't, I don't have any Washington County Mental Health BIs right now, do I? Do, I don't know any. Not, not?
Yeah, yeah, probably, it's-
Because the-
Or the public people there.
Yeah, I don't think you do.
And for a one-on-one, that obviously is in a child's IEP.
Correct.
And so it's sometimes tricky to get them to work with other kids. And sometimes, because the kids' needs are so high that they have a one-on-one, that you need to be with that kid.
Sure.
You know, speaking from experience.
Yes.
If you turn your back on this kid to help this kid, the reason he has a one-on-one becomes very apparent.
Just a, this is a small thing, but I'm just, I'm still thinking how to make Kari happy with the two point nine nine. There was a near tech services entry, thirty thousand dollars.
Uh, that is mostly software, and I think we're actually gonna be able to reduce that down a little.
Really?
Actually, but yeah, it's mostly software is, is what that cost was.
But I'm happy. You know, it's something miserable.
Oh, thanks, Gary.
But that passes for happy feelings.
Carl?
Yeah, just, just, so clarification, or just so I'm clear on what we're talking about. So it's a, a position, a retirement in food service.
Correct.
That will remain unfilled. And then there's a support person that will be cut.
There will be multiple positions.
Okay. Multiple, so when we, so can you be more specific as to multiple position? How many?
So one of them is definitely a position that was coming to us from Berlin. We won't fill it here, you know, so the kid moves, they tell us to add one more person into our budget to cover that kid. We will use existing personnel for that and not fill the position. So it is, all total, it's a cut of probably six positions.
And all support, those par educator's?
Yes.
Do they know it's a possibility?
No, no. This is one draft of a budget.
No, I know. Is there anything else we should know?
I, I will say that the one thing that, the surprise in our budget to us was the increase in the CBCC tuition. A twelve, a twelve percent increase.
Yeah, they complained, they, they got their, yeah, they heard from two of us. I actually missed negotiations some, as Carl knows, on Monday, that's where I was coming from, logging the complaint. They're, they're going for a hundred and eighty-five thousand, a hundred and seventeen thousand of it's here at Washington Central.
For how many kids?
We have twenty-five kids currently at CBCC, but we are paying for thirty-one students next year because of the six semester average. So last year we had thirty-two, the year before we had thirty-seven, and the year before that we had thirty-six. So we're paying on the average of those three years right now. And now this next year, we'll be paying on- And now, this next year, we'll be paying on the average of this year.
Previous two.
And the previous two. So, our, our overall cost is going to decline because of our twenty-five kids that we have now, but it's gonna take a little while before that actually gets us.
Who else is paying the other part of that increase?
Distributed amongst the other four supervisory, and it's probably Barry's got this second highest. Because just so, you have to look at the number of kids and where they're.
Is Harwood one of them?
Harwood's one of them, it's gonna, but, you know, they could have a decrease in student population. And because of the state statute that requires the way the funding works, I mean, this is all statute-driven, protect centers at six semester average, that, um, you know, Harwood, some, some of those issues, or some of those high schools could see actually lower costs when we have ours increasing. They gave it to us Monday, I didn't bring it with me, what the different, what the changes were, so I don't know.
What are the chances they appeal?
What, they appeal?
I, I.
Right, that you lodged a complaint.
Or?
Wow.
A complaint.
We don't, we actually, we actually, we actually don't set the budget. We don't, we, we just were the RAB, we sit on the RAB and can recommend, but it's set by the, uh, well, it'll be the new Barry School District will set it.
Twelve percent increase?
Yeah, and it's actually budget to budget, it's an eighteen percent increase. Um, from last year's budget to this year's budget.
And that budget's set, they set it already?
They haven't set it yet.
Oh, okay.
They're gonna, I guess there's some other means, I had to leave early to.
He had to leave, I kept up the complaints. And so, but the, we, we do have another meeting in December to, um, the, the regional advisory board has to recommend it.
How can they justify that? Percent increase.
Where, yeah, where's that going?
So, I mean, they have.
Are they hiring new staff?
They have some staff.
They're increasing, um, they're increasing their, um, co-op coordinator from point two to full-time. Um, they are not, there was no indication of any cuts.
No, they've used, in previous years, they've used fund balance to cut their tuition, they're not doing this this year.
Or as much, they are using it a little bit. Yeah.
But not to what they used to.
And they have a declining, well, their enrollment's declining slightly, so they're at about a hundred, the, the number that was given there, that they're basing a bunch of, is a hundred and forty-three kids. So, we, some of the, so, I would say, I mean, it's really a report to the board, this kind of, this is kind of a carryover between those two. I would say that, um, that there are a lot of factors that go into this, like, it's not a clear cut as to, you know, how it all happens. Um, I would say that, uh, from our perspective, we have a declining number of students who are going there at the same time that they're increasing their program. That's an added cost to us. Um, one of our other complaints is that, um, the tuition that we pay there is for, uh, what essentially is a three-quarter day. Um, students do not go full day from this school to there, they actually come back to us for one class each day. Um, and so, if we compare their tuition to the tuition of other, um, tech centers, that is not an apples-to-apples comparison, because some of the other tech centers are full-day programs. So, even though their tuition may look similar, uh, to some of those programs, those programs are full day, so the kids get all of their education at the tech center. Randolph is one of them, that's a full-day program.
Little More.
Little More is a full-day program.
It's a full-day program. And so, um, so we have some issues with that, is that our kids are sent back to us, um, and we have to educate them. You know, we, we're responsible for that, um, even though we're not able to, of course, increase our spending at.
So, do we not get state money for them?
We, we go straight back into, so the state money that we get goes straight back in, and then we have additional funds that have to go in as well. So, our state funds are really a pass-through.
Yeah, it's pretty much what it is.
Yeah.
And, and then we have to raise an additional two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in our budget to cover the additional costs. Um, that's not an increase, but that's the budgeted line that we have. So, yeah, it was, it was our single biggest, um, hit.
Yeah.
Um, as, other than our salary and our healthcare, which barely came under healthcare.
Yeah, that's true.
Because healthcare's a hundred and thirty-two.
Yeah.
So, any other questions?
People comfortable with this?
Yeah.
Is that, we just dropped?
Do you want something different? Do you want more information?
I, I still worry about the, the fund balance, that it, it has grown, I would say, healthy, but maybe too healthy. It starts to look a little bit slushy after a certain point, so I know it's.
We're, we're about to, yeah, um, you have an action item that's gonna take care of a big part of that, um, and so, uh, and then that would be moving into a capital expense, and we recognize that. I would also say that a big part of our fund balance increase has been on the backs of tuition kids. Um, so we have seventy-one students who are tuitioned into U thirty-two right now. Um, we budget for less than, we, we budget for fifty-four?
I think it's fifty-four.
I think is what we budgeted for in our next budget. Um, we look, if you recall, we no longer receive Roxbury students who accounted for, currently, we have ten students in the school from Roxbury. That's about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, that, we graduate four next year and then two each year, um, after that, until they're, they're gone.
And we don't replace them.
And there's no replacement for those kids. And when we look at Washington and Orange, which send the bulk of students to us, um, their class sizes are twenty or less, um, and almost all of their grade levels, K through eight this year. So, there are nineteen students in the eighth grade in the wa, Orange-Washington system. And so, if all nineteen kids came, we would preserve even, because we have seventeen tuition students who will be graduating this year. Um, but the odds of every kid from Orange and Washington coming here is extremely low. And so, we're going to start seeing the same decline in our tuition students that we see overall. So.
Yeah, that's been most the reason why the fund balance.
And, and so, there's not, that really is all to say that that fund balance is going to go away.
Right.
Right, that, that difference is gonna be gone.
Okay.
Yeah. And in fact, over the long term, we'll need to reduce our reliance on tuition students even more.
And we wanted, that was sort of a goal.
We actually feel it even from last year to this year, based upon the numbers that we have.
Yeah. Okay.
Can we talk about the forum?
That's my next thing.
Cool. So, I've been working on updating slides, I just wanted to run some things by you and ask a couple of questions. So, I was getting, I'm modeling on last year's. We'll go through the background information, talk about the budgeting process. Always a good opportunity to talk about the mission, um, some of our performance and the plan. I was even gonna include, um, the math target, you know, to show people, you know, where we're heading with this. And then talk a little bit about trends and, and student enrollment is an important trend. Then get into the draft budget that we just reviewed, and I'll summarize that, um, you know, at a pretty high level, I think. Oh, question. Scott, do you wanna do the macroeconomic stuff this year?
I'm, I, I love that sort of thing. If, if everybody is willing to humor me with that, I'm.
I mean, it provides, it's part of the context.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, should I send it to you?
Yeah, I have la, from last year, do, just do whatever you want.
I have a new.
Yeah, great.
A new show.
Okay. Yeah, so then, um, basically presenting at just a really high-level view of draft budget number two, there's, there's, doesn't seem to be a reason to include a menu of bed, budget reduction options at this stage, because we're kind of at the target that we established. Um, so then I was just gonna move into questions and comments, and here's what I have. What questions do you have? This is for the audience. What is your reaction to this information? So, really general, right? And then, are we properly balancing impacts on the students in school and, and taxpayers?
And we won't have tax information in two weeks. Bill?
Sorry, we're trying to just make sure we have our dozen notes in a row for what has to go on next.
Will we have any tax information in two weeks for community forum?
I can give you a little preview right now, if you'd like to have it.
I'd have liked to send that.
I know, it's not.
I want, I want Kari to finish what he was doing, but I just wanted.
Well, that, yeah, I mean, maybe there's a better way to, to weigh that or, uh, word that, but something about are we properly balancing the impacts? You know?
Yeah.
Being fair to those students and being fair to the taxpayers. Thoughts? Sound good?
Oh, it sounds great.
It sounds great, and we'll do it right at six o'clock.
Okay.
And we will have a hearing at five-thirty, the.
Oh, okay.
Krista got the quorum for us last week and forgot to call. And she apologized profusely.
Yeah, she felt terrible.
She felt terrible.
They didn't know that we had.
She forgot to call, no, she, she said she was so focused on making sure we had a quorum, then she got the quorum and she didn't think, oh, now I need to call the people and tell them we got a quorum. So, they didn't know.
They didn't know to show up.
They weren't, right. So, she apologized profusely, and I didn't want to do it tonight, because I knew it would be a disaster, so.
It was one of the most enjoyable half-hours.
It was, and I, I, I told her that, I said, you know, it's okay, we had a lovely meal and a lovely discussion, and we all make mistakes sometimes.
Usually a half-an hour is enough, but we wanna make sure it's enough, um, given that we have guests coming.
You know what? I'm gonna keep it to half-an hour.
Okay.
This, this is what night?
December nineteenth, so it's two weeks from tonight. So, five-thirty.
Don't be late.
We have a hearing, don't be late. And we, I will just, I'll say, we only have this much time for the forum, and we'll figure it out. That sounds great.
Okay.
Do you need help, or you all say?
Well, I'm gonna send it to Bill to update a couple of the data points and.
And Scott will give you those parts.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, that's really great. Do we wanna hear tax information tonight, or have we had enough? It's ten after nine. Can it wait? Do you care?
I can wait. A lot of our waiting for information.
Yeah.
Why don't you and I work on something for a slide on the taxes?
Okay, yeah. That's what people wanna know, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the problem right now is, I told you we had districts in the penalty, so it's kinda like, I know they're changing their budgets too.
Right.
So, let's not even talk about it tonight, yeah. Okay.
And we have to. I, I guess I would like to note this for the presentation. Would you like to see the, the differential between emerged and the individual, or just do this individual?
Individual. I think that's just too much complication for, for people with other hands around it.
Just wanna make sure, we've been running those for a while.
Is it really different?
Uh, it's actually surprisingly close.
Then no.
For U thirty-two?
No, no, I'm talking for everybody.
Really?
It's not that much difference.
I would just go with what, right now. It's good to hear.
I mean, this is a draft budget forum that we're gonna end up probably making a recommendation.
Yeah.
Be up to the next board to actually present it.
Reports to the Board, Central for My Career Service, did we just get that report?
You just got it.
You got it.
Student reps, we had administration?
I've been working on a budget.
Okay. Finance, we just got. Executive committee hasn't met. Policy committee, we met on Monday. We didn't have a quorum, so we worked on the charges, Lindy said. We also looked at a bunch of, um, one required policy. What's a required, there was a new required.
It's a required policy on, on student media.
That's right, yep, and student press, and freedom of speech.
Two or three weeks ago on freedom of speech and what they, and what they can publish.
And then we looked at a bunch of recommended policies and had those up against the policies that the school, all the different schools now have, and trying to figure out the similarities and differences, and hope that we can just go to one recommended policy. A lot of the ones that are on the books are very old, nineteen ninety-eight, two thousand two, two thousand four. Um, so we still have more work to do on that. School quality did not meet, negotiations?
Nothing to add to what Sean you said earlier.
Okay. Um, so, action agenda, approve a capital budget transfer.
So, we're asking that the board approve five-hundred thousand dollars from the fund balance to capital for our, um, track project.
From fund balance to capital.
Um.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Scott, in a second?
I'll second.
Jonathan, discussion? This is what we've been talking about for the last couple of months.
Correct.
And the hope, the hope is that we won't have to, we'll be able to pay for it. No bond or anything, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
All those in.
Oh, sorry, no, 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 please, go on.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. The pre-qualification criteria we looked at last week?
Yep.
Were there any changes to that?
Nope, you asked me a couple of questions, Adrian.
Yeah, thank you.
Answer them satisfactorily.
Yeah. Um, do people need to look at it again? Are you okay? So, a motion to accept the pre-qualification criteria that we looked at last week for the track improvements?
Still moved.
Scott, Carl, discussion on that one? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Somebody was gonna say something, or you were gonna say something?
I am gonna say something now, which is, um, so, as a result of you doing this, we will also need to make sure that this board meets, um, so, our architects and our engineers are going to need the board to meet in the Januaries. Am I correct that we have a January second board meeting for it? That's an important board meeting for us to, um, because we'll need to, um, oh, well, you'll have to pre-qualify the, the companies that can bid, so that the bid cycle will start at the right time.
Isn't everybody going to work on January second anyway?
Yeah.
What does it mean to pre-qualify?
So, what you've essentially done is you've set the standards of the companies that can pre-qualify for the project. And then those companies, you will then certify that these companies, and, and they're going to be extensively reviewed by our.
Architect and engineer.
Our tech and engineer. Um, and, and they will say, here's the companies that meet your pre-qualifications. You will approve those companies and those companies that can bid on the project. But the caveat here in this process is the company that comes in with the lowest bid is awarded the project.
Automatically.
Automatically.
Unless there's like a one percent.
Unless there's within one percent, right?
Right, and then we have to make decisions, but, um, so, the pre-qualification is the important part of all of this. The companies that you pre-qualify, you don't wanna pre-qualify, and this one, it's well-written and done by our architect, architects and engineers, is because if you pre-qualified a company that was substandard and they came in with a low bid, um, you would have to accept that.
But we don't really play much of a role.
No, no, this is where, this is where you lean, and this is where we building our issue. It's where you lean on our architect, our clerk of the work, who's part of this, Bill Ford, and our engineers, because they have experience working with these companies.
Yeah, are they gonna provide a letter or something?
Yeah, they'll, well, knowing John.
They'll be here.
He'll be here.
Okay.
It just seems like a lot of work right now.
And can we make a motion to approve the creation of an Act forty-nine committee and then, um, add the membership of Kari to that committee? A motion? Everybody wanna do that? That's what, um, what's his name?
Matt.
Matt was talking about in there. And I'm not gonna go through all the details, I think we can just approve this.
Iteration of like Articles Committee.
Exactly. So, a motion to approve the, um, creation of an Act forty-nine committee and appoint Kari Bradley to do it.
Still moved.
Carl, in a second. George. And Kari said he would be willing to continue to do that.
Yeah.
So, discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Board orders? Is there a motion to approve them? I saw them somewhere.
Put them away, sorry.
Lisa, do you need the number?
I think so.
Forty-two thousand, three hundred ninety-one and thirty-three cents. But let me check it with my glasses.
Yes, that's correct.
Yes. I can't take mine off. Forty-two thousand, three ninety-one, thirty-three.
Motion to accept those?
Still moved.
In a second?
Second.
Scott, questions about them? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Future agenda items. Budget. Board communication, we need to do a, excuse me, front porch forum.
I can do that, and I'm, um, certainly making the announcement about the forum.
I think that's the most important part of that.
Yeah, I think it'd be good for us to post twice, you know, like, once in the next week and then once the week after that.
Yeah.
Anything else you wanna include in that? From the past month?
Have we done, passed, said that we passed our five policy?
We did last night, yeah.
We did that, okay. I think we're good.
Just focus on that.
Yeah.